Your microphone.
This thing, the meeting is now in session. There you go. And I need approval of the agenda. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope, it's unanimous. Oh, sorry about that. Let's do roll call, please. Marty?
Yeah, Marty, game.
Susan Senate.
James Lowers.
Paul Green.
Susan Roth.
And.
DJ Kowd.
Down planner.
I'd also need approval of the minutes, please, for May 2nd, 2023.
Motion to approve this written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi, Randy.
It is unanimous. Public comment, this time is reserved for anyone who would like to speak on matters that are not being considered this evening before the board, and we don't see anybody. And so I'm going to presume there's, there are no comments.
No comments.
So the public comment was opened and closed at 7:00 PM. Pending applications. Ledwood Pass, site plan review. The applicant is seeking approval for the establishment of an 18-hole disc course golf course located off Route 1 on Tax Map 15, lots 17 and 17A. The owner's applicants are Legendary Properties LLC and K&amp;A Properties LLC. The applicant's agent is Paul Gadbois, P.E. Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Geller.
Right. Take it away, Paul.
Is it green?
Green.
Press the middle button.
Ah, there you go.
It's green, but it's a little now it's lit. It was still green. My name is Paul Gadbois. I'm doing the engineering on this particular project for Legendary Properties. Ted Santa-Minas here, co-owner, and Ethan Rubo is here also answering questions. Since the packet, we have received some good information on that packet. We notified there was a potential Vernal Pool next to hole 11. Because we, obviously, when they did the wetland designation, they passed the Vernal Pool season, so we didn't know if it was a Vernal Pool or it wasn't a Vernal Pool. Since then, they've been out there for the last couple of weeks, you know, obviously, the April-May timeframe to go out to check for the Wood Frog Egg Masses and the Salad Mandarin Egg Masses. And the Longview partners came back with a report, which will be submitted to the next application, that it's not a significant Vernal Pool, and they did follow that information with the IFNW just to put that on record. And if it would have been a Vernal Pool, Ethan did a lot of work. Work with IFNW, if it would have been a significant Vernal Pool, we still could have probably gone ahead with the project because it's such a minimal impact adjacent to the Vernal Pool, but it isn't. It's considered a wetland. We're not really changing our plan. We're still proposing to keep the same plan that we originally talked about with IFNW, trying to maintain 25-foot setbacks from the digital wetlands and still protecting that area of wetlands. Also, since then, subject system has been designed, that'll be in your next packet for the project. The applicants have come up with a sign detail that they'd like to actually promote on the project, and it's actually going to be carved out, so it's not just a square sign painted. It'll actually be a physical sign carved out, look like pine trees and have a, you know, Ledwood Pass as golf course on, adjacent to the entrance.
Excuse me, Pauls, is that something I can have a copy of?
No, you can. You want that now? You can.
Sure, just so that we can put it in the file.
Oh, yeah. It is on the page that they.
Oh, I missed that. Okay, great. It's good. We got it in the file then. Thank you. Exactly. Okay.
Thank you. Well, certainly, you know, the next submission will submit a complete application for the subject design and all the information for the Vernal Pools. The project did receive the MDOT construction entrance permit or permit for the entrance. We did receive the Amicore permit and DEP permit for the stream crossings. We did design, you know, detention pond to take care of the pre and post development flows coming off the project. There'll be ponds located down slope of the existing parking area. Those two ponds actually reduce the off-site flows on all the 10, the two 10 and 25-year events at the design point, which is that culvert. And I don't know if Ethan and Ted has anything else to add. The packet was, I believe I answered most of the questions required for the application packet. And if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
If I'm, if I may, Madam Chairman, just one note, Paul, you did ask for a waiver of the fire department's comments until final. You don't really need a waiver of that because they will get them.
Yep.
As the board is aware, the chief is been out on leave, and so we will get those, and the acting chief is aware that we're going to need those comments, so.
Oh, good.
That's fine. It's not a waiver that you need.
Okay, good. I guess I meant to say that I did send out the information, but I just didn't hear back from them, and I can't imagine it will be an issue because the parking lot is designed to actually handle fire trucks, you know, all the way around and drive it back out, so I don't think there'll be an issue, but you never know.
Yep.
Thank you.
Paul, quick question. Is there any issue turning right and left?
No.
Parking lot?
No.
You're all good either way?
Yes.
And is there going to be a special turn lane or anything?
No, this particular project, the other one you're thinking of was the Cross Project Timber Frames. That's because we didn't have the 840 feet of site distance in both directions for that particular project. So they requested a right turn out and, you know, right turn in only because of that fact. This, this project has the 800 feet of site distance in both directions, so we didn't need a variance from DOT. And they approved the application just the way it's shown.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do. I see that you have a ramp going up to your building for possible ADA, for ADA aspects of it, of looking at your bathroom sketches. Do you have ADA aspects of that in order to get in the doorways, any bars, any things like that that are planned into the bathrooms?
The applicants currently work with an architect, and they're coming up with the actual plans, and obviously ADA is incorporating those plans, but.
As well as your parking spaces, because I don't see any marked on.
Yes, I'm going to add signage for the two park. We need, we have 80 spaces, so we need one per 25, so we're going to need four handicap parking spaces.
Currently, they're not marked on anything yet.
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's included.
Very important. I'll write this down and make sure, yes.
And you're ramping. I can see that it's there, but again, when you're doing your picturing, to make sure that there's actually, again, it's a lovely rendition, just to make sure that the access is getting in properly too, if someone goes in.
Correct.
Some sort of wheelchair or.
Absolutely. Yep, it'll all be handicap accessible.
Thank you.
And the, the design is actually going to go away from that front deck. We're going to do a patio instead, so it'll be a lot less complex for that as well. So that's, that was like an original sketch that we did.
Okay.
One you have in front of you, probably.
Yeah, so we're, we're working with an architect now to get finalized, you know, drawings for all that.
Okay, thank you very much. That was the only thing. I was looking at it. No, that looked lovely. I was just looking at how it was designed in regard to someone who had any mobility issues.
Understood.
Silly question. You have to get it in the chain, you get a hole, or is it just in the basket?
If, if it hits the chains and falls into that basket there, that's, it's in. Yep. The, the official rule is supported by the basket, so technically, if it's somehow lands on the edge, it doesn't fall out.
Inside and the fine line, you know, that is, you know, like a couple of well.
Gotcha, yeah.
Long gets off the ground, supported by the basket, you're good.
Yep.
We give you a ball again.
I was just going to ask, are there any rules for mulligans?
Yeah, exactly. So you can get them on all different sorts of. Yep.
Similar, yeah.
Yep. Well, actually, all of those, all of those ones out there are part putters. The discs have different shapes to them to change how they fly, so you can have ones that will intentionally, you know, using golf terms here, hook or slice, et cetera, and so all those ones out there are putters, but yeah, you can have drivers in any color and weight.
You have to carry a bag around with all of their sponsors?
Yep, yeah, bag usually, people usually bag somewhere between 15 and 25 discs. I was like, wow. Yeah.
Right. It's not like bowling balls, Marty. There's different bowling balls.
Yeah.
Marty, I'm so happy when it goes in.
Next spring. It, it might not make sense to, to, to open when the season is kind of winding down, so we, we'd like to open the, the strongest season for disc golf is definitely around, you know, this time of year, April through about October, November. As soon as snow starts hitting the ground, only the crazies are still going out there, so we're hoping to, yeah, open, open in the spring next year.
Want to finish product, but don't want to have, you know, parts done.
Make a good first impression.
And hit the other nine out, or maybe they're going to.
Yeah, something to consider.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, the only thing is, is then, then people would be stranded out in the back of the property. They finished that whole night.
Yeah, what I understand is starting to get fun parts and relabel the numbers for 2009 and out, and then they want everything else is done, so that you should have.
Yeah.
Do like the front nine, whatever.
Marty wants to go play now.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes, I clarified to me what the, how the fairway is going to be maintained. I know there's been all those that they're not to be considered well through the U D standpoint, so the bowling will be pretty limited or.
Yeah, so it's not really like a grassy area. It's pretty thickly wooded, so typically, what, what happens in the disc golf courses is they'll have, you know, mulch out or, or what do you call it? Just like, like, yeah, I guess just chipped wood and whatnot, and it, it really won't take a whole lot of maintenance. Occasionally, you'll just need to, you know, trim some things back, but for the most part, once it's in, there's not really much you have to do to keep it, keep it going. And yeah, IFNW said that they classify these more as walking trails than anything else, or kind of picture what that looks like for what, what the, what the fairway look like. Yeah. Exactly.
Ted, I, I was just going to ask, are these, is this part of a franchise, or are these, are some of these courses franchised around the country, or is this a new idea, or?
Oh, no, no, that's, that's a good, interesting question, but you can, we did answer the track.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm not aware of any, of any franchising. Sometimes they'll franchise the, the clubhouses as like a storefront. You can have a partnership with one of the manufacturers to be a franchise in that regard, but we, we will, the, the course was designed by a former disc golf world champion. His name's Eric McCabe, and so that kind of partnership that you see with different, because he's sponsored by a disc manufacturer called Dynamic Discs. So although we're not going to be considered, you know, like a franchise, franchisee of them, we'll definitely have a strong partnership with them, and actually, that, the, the logo you see, the basket there is their, their colors that they're, they're allowing us to use there.
Ethan and I went to the world championship in Emporium.
Emporia.
Emporia, Kansas.
Yep.
And we went to their facility, their warehouse, and absolutely blown away the volume of discs that they're pumping up, you know, you know, throughout the world.
Hundreds of thousands out of that factory.
Yeah, and, and, and yeah, and in, in, in that disc golf world, Eric McCabe has huge name recognition. You know, so it's really going to put us on the map, and Maine is on the map as a disc golf macro right now.
Yeah, actually, there, there's a company called UDisc. They have a catalog of all the different disc golf courses in the world. Right now, there's about 14,000 of them, and they did what they call like rank, like world rankings of like the best town to live in in the world if all you cared about was disc golf, and they actually said Lewiston. If all you cared about was disc golf, would be the best place.
Oh, is there a course in Lewiston?
There, there's, there's like 30 in that area, like within, within like a 15-mile radius.
Wow.
Really? I've never.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah. And Maine's got a unique scene with the disc, with, with disc golf, because in most of the world, 91% of the courses are actually free. They're on public land. But Maine, almost all of them are pay-to-play and they're privately owned, so Maine has what's considered one of the best disc golf scenes because being privately owned, it's better maintained, you know, there's, there's a pro shop, there's somebody there. It's not just like some honky thing where they put some baskets in the ground, you know, and go try it.
Well, that bodes well for you guys.
It'll, it'll kind of go both around, it's going to be on disc golf for a month and a half. And there, there's some beautiful woods out there for disc golf course with the ledge and outpropping and stuff. You'll see some of it here.
Yeah, it's a lot of variation and, you know, the, the fauna and everything, like depending on where you are in the course, it feels like you're in a different, entirely different woods, so it, yeah, I think you'll enjoy it.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, just.
What's that?
Wildlife.
Now, we, we see, we see a lot of deer droppings.
Deer droppings and rabbits and.
Yeah.
I think all the fox and stuff over my head trying to get my chickens.
Well, I didn't know if there was like turkeys.
Oh, a ton of turkeys.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you never know when, you know, the turkeys, they usually are in the morning, but you never know when they want to go. They have their own territory.
They, they've got to pay to play too, if they want to be on the.
They eat the ticks.
Exactly.
I just wanted to give you a heads up on this situation. I, I, I bowl in leagues and the bowlers all that, they do disc golf all summer, spring, and then they bowl all winter into fall, so just as a heads up to notify your bowling alleys, because that's what they do, is.
That's a good.
When it's sport, summer's sport.
Letting you know. So it's one of those things that, once you get going.
Yeah.
That's a marketing aspect for you.
Yeah, one, one, one thing that a lot of, you know, the, the better private courses out there do is like they call it a putting league, so they'll, they'll, they'll have people come by, and even in the wintertime, they'll, they'll have the practice basket set up and they'll, you know, have, have some kind of competition style for, for putting, so that's, that's, that's a good idea, the bowling alleys. I like that.
What's putting against?
So when you're, when you're actually, when you're within about like 60 feet of the basket.
Okay.
Just try, try to put it.
Okay, yeah, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, yes. Okay, makes sense, yes.
All right, gentlemen and ladies, any, anything else?
One final question.
Okay.
Someone told me that. I remember some feedback, I remember the, the second from our sketch plan on treatment of the parking area.
Yes.
Seeing that you guys shown a gravel.
Correct.
Right, so the way the ordinance was written, it, it talked about a, I'd have to go and look at the ordinance, but there was discussion about a hardpan type of material to be put down, and at the time, I asked Roger Tasharow, our public works director, if he considered what they were looking to do, a material that would meet the standard of the ordinance, and Roger agreed that that was a, an impervious material. Once you compact that gravel, as you know, Jamie, being in the, in the industry, once that's compacted, it is considered impervious even by DEP rules. So that seemed to have met the standard that was required of the ordinance. Yeah.
Oh, is that what it's going to be? Reclaim that, Paul?
No. No, it's going to be compacted gravel, correct? Yeah, but compacted gravel, compacted gravel meets the, meets the standard of being an impervious surface. Reclaim was definitely part of our discussion when they were at Sketch Plan, but it, it also went to what, you know, what other materials are there, what can they do that considered impervious? Because the reclaim, what, what we needed to get to was what is impervious for parking purposes, and gravel, compacted gravel does meet that standard.
Yeah, the parking lot details, 12 inches of subbase and three inches of crush. Total 15 inches. Except for the entrance, we're paving it as required.
Yeah.
Right now, I think it was, the ordinance says 40 feet, but I have to double check. Right, to that line. I will double check that. I believe that's what I did.
The DOT standard, I believe, yeah. Because they're on Route 1.
So, Lee J, is there anything else that you would like to see or know about that would stop us from deeming this application complete?
No, not at all. In fact, this is a very well put together application, and I see no reason why it can't be found complete. I think everything has been provided, and I believe the only waiver that was actually being requested by Paul was that fire department comment, and that does not need to be granted as a waiver at this time.
So I need a motion to deem this application complete? Do I have a second? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Well, I asked Lee J if there was anything else that was missing that would deem, stop us from deeming this application complete. So, that being said, we'll deem the application complete. We need to schedule A, a site walk, and B, a public hearing. So when can we do that? We have a site walk on the 23rd.
You do. You have a site work, a site walk on the 23rd, which you do have a note from Ann on. So if you want to, if, if you think you can do it, probably not that night. So we're looking at, right now, I do not believe we have any applications at this time for the meeting of the 5th. 6th, excuse me.
On June?
Yep. There may be something coming in, but if you want to try and get a site walk in before the planning board meeting of the 6th, then you could schedule that, and if nothing does come in as anticipated for that meeting, then that gives you more time to spend out on the site.
So hold on a second. I'm a little confused. So do we have anything on the 23rd? Are we meeting with Michael?
You have a site walk on the 23rd. That's not a, that's not a regular planning board meeting.
Right.
This is the, no.
Right, but the 6th is.
Yes.
So is there anyone that can not make it to a site walk on the 6th of June? I can make it. Anyone else? We need three.
I have.
Do you guys? Does that work?
Paul, you, you can do it.
I have to make it. He'll make me. I have no choice. I'll be.
Paul, can you make it on the 6th? Jamie, Susan?
Yeah, what time?
Why don't we say 5:30?
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
A public hearing afterwards at the meeting?
Is, is there a need for, um, June 6th? Yeah, we've got, I believe we've got three weeks, so she only needs two for advertising, so we can, we can.
Is that okay?
That's perfect.
Okay. So we have a site walk on, on the 6th, at 5:30, and then we'll have a public hearing that night at the meeting. Okay, anything else?
Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you very much.
Got the basket outside if you want to try it.
So can I have a motion, please, to approve the site walk and the public hearing? Or do they have to be done separately?
They have to be done separately.
Okay.
Separations.
I need a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, it's unanimous. I need a motion to schedule a public hearing the night of June 6th.
We reimpold the public hearing on the site for June 6th, planning board meeting.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous, and Jamie made the motion. Susan, second.
Gotcha.
That does it.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I hope you're going to spray Ted for the, all the poor souls that are going to be out here playing. Yeah, really. And your business car.
We're thinking about just maintaining problems, got a cool goals in there.
I, I think that's terrible. Yes. Hey, sustainable.
No, we're really excited about it. We put it on, I've never thought of all working with it. It's gonna be like, we're really excited about it. Thanks so much.
You're welcome. Good night. Oh, I'm going to practice. I'm going to teach talk, how to retrieve the, retrieve the frisbees. Planner's report?
Yes, I actually have some things for you tonight. Excuse me, just as a follow-up, because we had been working on the, the ADU amendment for LD 2003. I'm, I'm hoping it sounds like everything's going smooth to put it on this warrant, but I will also tell you that the legislate, Legislative Housing Committee had been workshopping a number of potential amendments to the law, and one of the things that has been asked of them is an extension of time for communities to be able to put this in place, and they, they voted coming out of committee that communities that have councils, a form of government where the council can actually vote on the amendment without it going to town meeting, has an additional six months, and towns like ours here, where there is a town meeting, form of government, the, the extension request was coming out of committee as one year, so any other amendments or changes that we may need or want for the housing issues, we'll have till next June to be able to incorporate. Which is great. It's gives, gives us a sigh of relief for everything that we need to do for all of our communities. June 20th is a regular meeting of this board. I won't be here. I'd ask that maybe consider changing it to the 27th. Hopefully, some of you folks won't be here either. That is our SMPDC's annual meeting. All of you will certainly get an invite to come to that. There's a meal, and we have a speaker. This year's speaker is the state economist. She'll be coming in to talk about the state of the state, if you will, with, with a number of issues, including housing and in migration and that sort of thing. It will be held in Saco, right at Saco Island, where, where our office is. We'll probably also be holding like an open house at our office, but there is a conferencing space down on the first floor of the mill building, and that's where the dinner and speaker is going to be.
Lee J, do you know what the July meeting schedule will be? Since July 4th is Tuesday.
That is also on my agenda.
Okay.
So the first meeting, suggesting moving that to July 11th, because the first meeting would be the 4th of July. And what that's going to do though is back it up so that you'd have two meetings back to back in July. The 11th and the 16th. 18th, excuse me.
Does that work for everybody? I'm not sure I'm going to be here, but.
I'm not sure I will be either. It's too far ahead for us, for a teacher, summer.
Okay.
To meet, to know where I'm traveling.
So what I'll do is I'll just, you know, keep Rich in the loop, and, and we've got another month anyway. So if we need to cancel that meeting completely, because folks do vacation and go away and whatnot, then we will just cancel that meeting.
Okay.
But what that also does, with the pencil not put on the 20th, if we remove that to the 27th.
Yep.
For the 13th, whichever way we go, you know, we can still have a meeting somewhere.
Correct.
You know, we could figure that out, because it's closer.
Correct, yes.
So is there any objection to moving the June meeting to the 27th as opposed to holding it on the 20th? I, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
So we need a motion for that, don't we?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion and move the June 20th meeting to June 27th.
Second? Second? So the motion is made by Paul, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay.
Sure.
Is your mic on? Uh, is your mic on? Yes, you do. Cause I can, I can point over, not all I know, but.
All right, my mic's on now. Has there been any more food vendors besides the four that you guys have approved of since? Last.
No, um.
Just you got. You got four of them that you've been approved of already.
Yeah, so there is some talk of expanding that area. Uh, probably won't be this year, but there's some talk of it, possibly expanding that area and coming in from, from the other side.
Yeah.
But we haven't had anything and actually I think it would probably have to come through you guys if they expand. Yeah, they do, because. Yes, I, I, I met with the landowner today as a matter of fact to talk about what, um, applications and processes. Um, may be required of them and they will need to come to the planning board because they'll have four or more. Users. We only did three. I thought there was four, but we only did.
Well, the fourth one was a puppy dog. That's.
Oh, okay.
That's why I'm calling four, but it's three on that line. And then puppy dog, I think was over at Champion Autos.
Right.
So.
Right.
But no, I just inquiring if there's been any others.
Nope.
Because for this month of other activities in town. Has there been anybody? Submitted yet? That's what I'm trying to.
No, we, I know that Vinegar Hill has an opportunity to maybe put some there, but they haven't come to us yet.
Okay, because there's the reason, there's a reason why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Which is?
So that. All vendors or venues in town without naming anybody particular. Uh. Who might have a food truck. At an establishment or covered by the town under licensing.
Okay, I, you lost me. Um, so. There is a food truck that is not licensed, is that what you're saying?
Don't know yet.
Well, if there's, if there's a food truck that is operating, then the court enforcement needs to know and they could check in and wait.
Correct, correct. I mean. No, 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 it hasn't happened yet, but I was just inquiring. If through the selectmen, has anybody else come through and applied for? Anything this month? Of activities or anything else, so they're covered. On weekends or are they just gonna sneak in?
I don't know. I think unless you have somebody there enforcing and then checking, uh, permits. That I don't know how else you would know, except.
Wait until time sees.
Yeah.
But, but I, like I said, I was just wondering if somebody else might have come in. So they're covered along the way.
So, so I think the, the, the point and certainly the select board member made a, an excellent point is that we know that there aren't. We know where they're located and if anybody sees any additional ones, I think. Then it becomes an enforcement action and a future enforcement action that maybe the select board will choose not to grant them a, a, a permit in the future. Because they operated without one, which was illegal. So that's certainly something that would need to be dealt with if and when that ever happens. Right, and, you know, I, I, I can't speak for if there is a vendor or whatever and, and whether they know that they need to come through or not. But that's where you get the CEO involved and he'll go over and say, hey, you know, you need a permit for this. And if they say no, then you'll say, well, you can't operate until you do. And then go from there, but.
No, that's why I was just.
Yeah, no, we haven't, we haven't had anybody come to us yet.
That's the only reason I was asking, because you got Memorial Day weekend coming up.
Dan, do you have anything for the board? You want to ask us anything?
No.
Comments, questions, participants, officers, they would say?
No, I actually don't want to come in, listen to the disc golf, but they're already come and gone, so. Yeah, yeah, I know it'd be pretty quick, so.
If they come back for the public hearing.
To the chair, I move it, be adjourned.
I need a second for that. Yeah, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay.